We do the report out first? Is that how this works?
Roll call.
Roll call, again.
And trustee Tarpley.
Here, still.
And trustee Henderson.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Pinkerton.
Here.
Trustee Wood. He's around, okay. Student trustee Fulton here. Superintendent President Walden.
Here.
And I'm just following this, so we're gonna do the pledge, right? Or do we do the... Pledge of allegiance, does anybody wanna volunteer? Art Lopez.
Mr. Pinkerton said he would.
Got the prayer.
Well, that's...
Is it the pledge and then the prayer? Because that's how I wrote it.
God, country, schools.
I pledge allegiance.
Art Lopez, go ahead.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our invocation is past pastor, Pastor John Richard. If you wanna come up to the record, sorry.
You were right.
Thank you. I'm always right.
And I like that, thank you. God, country, for God's sake. Well, that's great. Lord, we do thank you just for the opportunity, the freedom, the privilege, the honor to pause before this meeting and to focus in on you and to give thanks. Lord, we recognize full well that we live in a day and age that is full of confusion for many, full of questions, full of fear, full of strife. And yet, Lord, we thank you for the fact that you tell us that you did not give us a spirit of fear and timidity. So, Lord, we do ask for your peace, for your guidance, for your wisdom, for your direction, for your love, for your gentleness, for your understanding. Lord, we ask that you would continue to bless, bless our state, bless our community, bless our nation. And we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, and thank you so much.
Thank you, pastor.
Um, announcements, something?
Closed session report.
That mine says different things, though. Okay, closed session, Jeff, thank you, sorry. I need glasses.
Oh, on your mind.
Yeah.
Good evening, President Tarpley and members of the board. The board met in closed session beginning at approximately 5:01 PM. All five members were present. On item 2.1, initiation of litigation, on a motion by trustee Henderson with a second by trustee Brady, the board voted four to zero to authorize litigation concerning overpayment of wages. Trustee Wood abstained from that vote. At approximately 5:33 PM, I left closed session and the board met on item 2.1, the second matter for initiation of litigation, and item 2.3 concerning existing litigation regarding the dismissal of employee Heath Cohen. The board was advised by attorney Leo Santiago of the law offices of Randy Erickson, and the board voted on a motion by President Tarpley with a second by trustee Pinkerton, five to zero to initiate litigation, to file a writ of mandate challenging the appeal of the administrative law judge's decision from June 23 of 2022. The board adjourned at approximately 5:57 PM, and that concludes the report out. Thank you.
And announcement of items deleted or corrected from the agenda, is there anything?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm pulling agenda item 6.1, solar project presentation. Agenda item 12.5, resolution number 22.12, authorizing energy services agreement issued to government code 4217. Agenda item 12.6, resolution number 22.13, resolution parking lot.
Too fast.
Cue solar, photovoltaic, California Environment Quality Act categorical exemption. All are basically being delayed until the August board meeting. While we seek, we are engaged in consultation with an outside, third-party expert to this whole process, just to have them look at... They are an expert in the field, they're not charging us any money for this review, but they feel like they wanna call some other entities, particularly colleges or school districts that have done this kind of thing and get their feedback as well as completely look at the entire scope of the project. So, based on that, I mean, if the consultant says this is a bad deal, we don't think the college should get into it. Unless the board wishes so, I probably wouldn't put it back on the agenda. But if we, if she's somehow neutral or else in favor of it and says it looks like a good deal for the... Because she doesn't have a dog in this fight, because she's not even charging us. So, she's just giving it to us based on our relationship, and then we'll bring it back. So, the intent, I'm expecting, because this is actually a no-cost project to the district. Anyway, my concern is I don't want us to end up with an albatross that, because I've been in a college that did that, they put in a driving range, and it ended up being a terrible nightmare and ultimately did cost the college several million dollars. So, to get it taken out was what happened. So, that's my past experience that gives me pause, because I try to bring things to the board that I'm recommending. And at this point, I need a little bit more research before we bring this.
President Walden, I just...
And then was that, oh, that was it? That's all the items pulling.
I just wanna go on the record and thank you for moving that to the next and bringing in whoever you're bringing in to take a look at this so that we don't end up having an albatross, so.
Yes. That was what I'm pulling, and there's no corrections.
Okay. So, our next item is the swearing-in of our new student trustee and ASB president, Deanne.
Did you give me the...
You gotta go from memory.
Are we going up to the front?
Let's go right down front.
For photos from Robert Sewell.
Here, side to side. They have our new trustee and ASB president, Deanne Violet Fulton. All right, wanna pull up your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, Deanne Violet Fulton.
Hi, Deanne Violet Fulton.
Having been appointed by my peers on June 27, 2022.
Having been appointed to my peers, by my peers, on June 27, 2022.
Served as the Associated Student Body President and student trustee.
To serve as the Associated Student Body President and student trustee.
To the Board of Victor Valley Community College District.
To the Board of Victor Valley College, Community College District.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The State of California.
The State of California.
And the Victor Valley College Associated Student Body.
And the Victor Valley College Associated Student Body.
In addition.
In addition.
I will abide by the Victor Valley Community College District Board policies.
I will abide by Victor Valley Community College District Board policies.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of student trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of student trustee.
For Victor Valley Community College District.
For Victor Valley Community College District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Woo-hoo! Welcome aboard, sis. She's not my sister, it's a term of endearment, just so everybody knows.
She's not.
She's not. Okay, moving on to public comments related to non-agenda items, do we have any? Board of trustee goals, are we adopting here in this session?
So, that's later, so...
So, we'll just skip it.
Skip them for tonight, yeah.
And we're gonna go on to the superintendent president's report, skipping 6.1.
Yes, and I believe, Deanne, you guys haven't met to actually officially adopt them.
Oh, look at this.
So, we won't do those tonight either. They have a draft, but she will, after they actually meet and adopt them, you can present them to the board next month.
Okay.
We don't have a facilities update. We are gonna deal with facilities issues later and agenda items later, and that's when we will do the presentations or the, have, give you what information you need to help make those decisions, particularly in regard to the educational center and the stadium, athletic stadium. So, therefore, Kirsten, are you the one doing this tonight? Okay, from the foundation.
Good evening, Board of trustees, superintendent president Walden, and congratulations to you, student trustee Fulton. Last meeting, I shared that we had just had the scholarship... Last meeting, I shared that we had just had the scholarship drive, and we didn't have any video or pictures yet, so I have video for you this evening that I wanted to share. So, if you'll turn your attention to the screen or screens. So, some highlights. Thank you for those that could make it. We really appreciate it. We had almost 100 students that were able to make the drive-through celebration and be celebrated, so that was fun. And then I reported that we were going to be at graduation, so we were at graduation. We had some alumni engagement. We were able to sign up just over 100 of the students that were present with alumni cards and join our alumni association, so we're making progress there. And then we also have a video to share with you for that. So, go ahead and roll that, Tim.
Oh, I'm such a dork. Always. Too short.
So, we also absolutely love being a part of it and look forward to making it better and bigger next year and more engagement. It's a great opportunity to capture those alumni and really make those connections. So, thank you for letting us participate, and we definitely plan to do that again, pre-party, alumni pre-party and make a big deal. And Chris Nunez rocked it, of course, as the hype man.
No doubt.
So, and then now I also wanted to call Fred Hunter up to the stage. Fred is our new Foundation Board President, and I wanted him to come and speak to about it.
Yes, she wanted me to, but anyhow, to President Tarpely and all of the board members, trustees, and of course, Dr. Walden, it's my pleasure to be a part of this and to have this privilege to work with all of you and with all the students that we have here that are just so seeking for these opportunities to grow and create careers and be able to bring back to our community the talent that we need to create a very robust and healthy community. So, not about healthcare and hospitals. I'm just talking about everything that we can do. So, very proud to be in this role right now, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to working with all of you.
We're so happy.
My apologies for having to cancel the meeting today.
No problem.
We were doing a construction project at the house, and it was overwhelming at the moment, so.
You gave me an extra hour to do something else that I had to do too, so it was good. But thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
That's all I have. Metheny questions for me?
Okay, so Fred's going to do the report next month, though. He's not going to.
Thank you. Just an announcement tonight that the Stadium Event Center groundbreaking has been moved to Tuesday, August the 9th. So, that is at 4:00 PM, just before closed session at the August board meeting. So, it will be on the south side of the track by the scoreboard. So, look for canopies and chairs, and you'll find your way there. Because it is an athletic complex as well, we're excited to have, I know, our football team and perhaps some of the other teams, athletes at this event.
This is the invite right here.
Along with the usual group of dignitaries and others. So, this was put off, put it off so that we could have a better chance of getting our artwork back in time and getting everyone, doing the promotion of it in a thorough fashion. So, mark that down, and we'll get it done. And then, just in regard to COVID, we're managing. We have a great coordinator, Laura Hubbard, who's doing a fantastic job, but it has taken a full-time job on this that thankfully the government did give us money to pay for it. So, but you have to keep records of all the little things. It's just really tedious, and she's doing a wonderful job. COVID is on the rise in our county and at the college. But thankfully, we don't see any rise in hospitalizations or deaths. So, people are just getting it and getting over it, and so we're counting our blessings in regard to that. And with that, that is the conclusion of the Superintendent President's report.
So quick.
So, if it turns out to be a long meeting, if it turns out to be a long meeting, it is not my fault.
Aren't those your official comments?
That's it.
Okay. So, moving on, we're going to do constituency groups, academic senate, AFT part-time, ASB. Is there anything you want to say?
We have a meeting coming up on Thursday, and we plan on discussing and adopting and ratifying our ASB goals that we accomplished this weekend. We had 360-plus goals, and we narrowed them down to eight goals.
Yeah, you did.
And I look forward to doing this with ASB.
Right on. CSEA? CTA? And management.
I don't think.
Is it an off-month?
We were all together.
Get a reprieve?
At the retreat.
A reprieve. We'll call it a reprieve.
President Tarpely, do I see ice cream at 7:30?
I mean, it lies solely on us at this point, so if we all just mind our Ps and Qs and keep our comments to a minimum, we're going to move on to item.
That was clause-worthy.
We're going to move on to the consent agenda. I get a motion, right?
Motion.
Thank you. Ooh, I'll give it to Brady and Henderson for the second. And?
Public comments?
Public comments? Wait, oh, did I forget? We don't have any. Thank God. I'm saved by the bell.
Do they wish to pull any?
Does anybody wish to pull anything? Oh, my God, this is awful. I'm so tired. Thank you. No, nothing pulled? No, we're all good? Okay, student advisory vote? So, what this is, is we always look to you to tell us what the students think. I know you haven't had any prep time. We were all together. You were all there.
Yes, she did. She came and met with me and had questions all over this consent agenda.
So, we always ask if your vote is yea or nay to approve or not approve, if your vote is yes or no.
Yes.
And are we doing this?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll see. There it is. It did. Mine did. It was just slow. It's tired, too. Okay, and then we're going to move on to the action agenda, public comments related to action agenda items. None? And we already pulled, so we're going to go to item 10. -- no, there's no, 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 we're not, sorry. 10.2, Board of Trustees Self-Evaluation Results. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
So, the motion I heard was from trustee Wood, and the second was from Brady. Anything, anybody wants to talk about that? Say anything about that?
This is, it's published, right?
Yes. Yeah, we're good. Okay, student advisory vote? Okay. 10.3, approving the Board of Trustees' goals for '22, '23. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Ooh, I like you guys tonight. You're peppy. I'm going to give that one to Pink. And we're going to give the second to Henderson. His pen's about to run out.
Would you be all right if I read this?
I would love it if you would read it. That would be amazing.
The following governing board goes to find how the trustees will add value to the district through their governance, with their focus on the mission, quality, outcomes, and improvement. The board demonstrates their policy and mission-directed leadership, role, and responsibility for institutional effectiveness and student success as outlined in the guide to accreditation for governing boards. Goal one, support and provide feedback on the writing of the institutional self-evaluation report, supporting actions that demonstrate the college meets accreditation standards. Goal two, promote, nurture, and support the district's efforts to ensure implementation of the recommendations from the California Community College Chancellor's Office Vision for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force Reports dated April 14, 2020. Goal three, demonstrate commitment to support and improve, proving student, to supporting and improving student outcomes, including enrollment and retention strategies to maintain FTS through planning and resource allocation. Goal four, monitor the fiscal health of the college with the goal of maintaining a minimum of 16.7% reserve. Goal five, build stronger community relations to encourage greater partnership opportunities and support for college programs and facilities.
Well done. Can I get the student advisory vote? If I don't, they harass me, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I pointed to that one, too, just so you know.
So, how do you want to dip you them up this time?
Yeah, that's a good question. Do you guys want to pick, or do you want me to assign them?
I'll take goal.
So that we can report out on them? That's a good question.
Goal two.
You like goal two? Anybody have any?
I can take goal one.
Are we writing this down?
I'm going to write it down right here.
I'll take goal five.
Take three.
Guess what you get up there?
I guess I get four. Wood, I got a free.
Make sure Michelle got the one.
Got it?
Do you need it? Or I can just give you my notes.
Pinkerton, one.
Oh, look at you.
That's the one I did, but I don't have one, and I have five. Oh, five is great.
Yep, and four is Jen by default.
We'll go back to two, three, reporting out, since I made a very bad suggestion at last board meeting, especially board meeting. Walter, maybe it won't be that.
How could you?
We'll continue to do as you. It's your pleasure.
After that, you'll be off probation and just six short months.
All right. Did we vote on that? Did it show up? We did all that, okay. 12.1, initial study checklist and tiering review to the final program environmental impact report, the EIR. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Brady, second by Henderson.
John Nolan needs to speak on this one to explain to you what it is, because it is a required prerequisite to 12.2.
So, as part of facilities planning and the planning for Measure JJ, the district had an environmental impact report done. You might recall that. And part of the California Environmental Quality Act is that when the projects are initiated that are contained in your planning documents, you have to go through a checklist to make sure the project meets the original EIR. So, we engaged EPD Solutions out of Irvine to do the checklist. So, they went through a checklist. They went through all the bid documents, all the bid planning, all the project planning to make sure that we were in compliance with the original EIR, and then basically asked the board in this document to accept their findings and basically declare that there's no negative impact to the environment on the Stadium Event Center project.
All right, thank you. Any questions for John?
Just kind of a question, because we deal with the ARs all the time. What do we spend on this one?
This was not fully AR. This checklist cost about $50,000.
Yeah, this is a focused one.
Anything else? Student advisory vote?
I agree. Yes?
Yes. Yay. Whatever you want to say. Thank you, John. It will. There you go. It's a little slow. Okay, we're on 12.2 bid award for the stadium. That was.
$32 million.
Go slow?
Change.
Yeah, she does not.
Oh, sorry. My bad. Got ahead of myself.
Check one and pass it down.
12.2 bid award. Same enthusiasm as before. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Such a good tie. Wood gets the motion. Henderson gets the second. Any comments?
Well, this is, so this is where we would, we're doing a little presentation so you can comment.
Okay. Tim, could you tee up the bid tabulation first, please? So, I'm glad you guys are sitting down, because I was sitting in that room over there reading bids on June 27th, and every time we opened up a bid, the big, the numbers were big. The one thing we did get, we got nine bidders to participate. You can see there what their bids were. The parent-low bidder was Bernard Brothers, $32,338,338,000. So, pretty, pretty close, three or four bids low. The high bid was $36,820,000. So, we're comfortable that it was a good, solid bid process. We're uncomfortable with the numbers, but escalation, I had just seen a presentation on escalation, I think, since really last fall, has been about 30% since last fall. Over, we know that we've got inflationary issues. But as you can see, you can go ahead and pull up the next. I hand it out. We've been, I've been spending a lot of time working the numbers. So, this handout you got shows basically our estimated costs of the project, including all the costs that we've incurred since we started the project. That means architectural fees, the payments we've made to DSA, things like that. So, these numbers are very conservative. I hope they're very high. So, our total project estimated cost, $47 million, roughly almost $3 million in contingency. On the right side of your sheet, you can see where the funding sources are. So, our total funding so far in our, when we issued bonds the last time, we, it was about $31.5. We've had about a million and a half in interest earned over the last couple of years. So, there's about, we're estimated $33 million worth of bond money available for this project. As you know, and we've talked about the GIC, it's estimated, there's about 18, almost $18 million left in the GIC. There's another year or so, a couple of years of interest. We are trying to maximize our return with those funds. We're estimating that there'll be about $8 million left over after we fund the renovation of '50, '52, and '55. So, that's $41 million. We do, we We do, we do have a pretty good fund balance in the capital outlay fund. I think we began last year at about eight or almost nine million dollars. We do, we did, we do have a lot of, we had a lot of dreams using that money. But we, we feel that there's at least 6 million. We could, we could fund the rest of the project out of the capital outlay fund. That fund usually receives anywhere from two to two and a half million dollars annually of redevelopment funds. So that fund keeps, as far as the redevelopment programs are still going in the local districts, there is some funding that annually comes in there.
We are expecting about six or seven million, uh, in capital outlay.
In deferred maintenance. So yeah, for some of our maintenance projects, there, there was a very large, as we at the last meeting talked about, an 891 million dollar allocation statewide for deferred maintenance, which could give us six to seven million dollars in deferred maintenance funds, which is a two-year program. We'll have two years to expend those. But typically, those funds have a cap on the size of project that, that the state will fund. Once you reach a certain level, they feel that it's not really a maintenance project. It's a, it's a construction, you know, it's a heavy construction project. I hope they'll, with inflation the way it is, they'll increase that cap. It was about 760,000, something like that. I hope they'll increase that, because obviously our costs are going up. We can't do what we used to do with that kind of money.
I just wanted the board to know that there would still be money to do, to maintain our facilities.
Yeah, and we are actively working, got a lot of projects teed up. Additional funding options, if we run into any issues. We, if you read the newspaper the last few days, the county assessed values up 9% over the la, in the last year. So we have asked our underwriting team to give us an estimate on what kind of bonds we could issue at this point with that kind of increase. We could, worst case, issue certificates of participation. That was Al. Building 44 was built. It's a quick funding option. And then there could be, you know, there's additional capital outlay funds available if we do have any more issues above the, what we anticipated. And I really hope this project comes in more around below 45 million. So we are excited. We did some due diligence on the low bidder, Bernard Brothers. They have stellar reputation. They're, uh, some of the schools that we talked to, Long Beach City College indicated that it was the best general contractor they've had on their campus. And they've issued three different bonds, uh, programs, uh, and then, and we've looked at their past projects. They're, they seem to be a very good, high-quality company. So we're, we're really excited about that.
And they say that they, the last 53 million dollar, they had a, lasted 1%?
Yeah, we, we looked, at Long Beach, they did a 53 million dollar athletic, aquatic center, all kinds of athletic facilities. And they were very, change orders were almost nonexistent. So it was really.
That's music to the ears.
Wouldn't that be nice?
That'd be nice.
And there was no construction manager on that?
I didn't check on that. I have had conversations with Bernard's. Right now, they're said about plus or minus 25% of the trades are local to the High Desert for subcontractors for this project. The sub-list included Cooley Construction for demo earthwork and AC paving.
Say 25%.
Kearns Incorporated for site utilities. Vern's Glass Company for glazing and aluminum trellis. So I think if the board approves the project, we're anxious to kick it off.
Any more comments?
Couple, a couple of questions, John, on the owner-controlled insurance program.
Yeah.
Can you explain that? I've never seen that before.
That's a JPA. It's called SOUP. It's through the Keenan Program. It's a consortium of, it's for, what you do is you provide workers' comp, liability, workers' comp, I mean, builders' risk to the contract, for the project. And you basically control the insurance costs. And then the contractor has to work with us, 'cause we're covering their, their insurance costs. So basically, it takes it out of the bidding war, because some of, some contractors have better workers' comp experience than others. And so, and really, the attractive part of this program, and one of the reasons I recommended Dr. Walden, to Dr. Walden that we use it, is this provides 10 years of defects insurance, construction defects.
Oh, that's fantastic.
So this is a program I thought we were gonna have a special presentation on, wasn't it?
Uh, well, we did before, I think a few months ago. Yeah, no, but, um, normally you get a one- or two-year warranty in your construction and then, but this, this one allows, and with, uh, the specialty tracks and the specialty turf, I think it was just a good move to get that 10-year.
Out in the weather, yeah.
Deficient, you know, def, construction defects. And then, and then I know our construction attorney has used this pro, this, uh, OSIP program, and they've, uh, worked out well as far as making sure that the defects get fixed and they go after the contractor, whoever is, you know, liable for.
Is there like a deductible if there's an issue? Do you file a claim? Is there a deductible by the college on this policy?
No. No, it's all upfront. All risk, basically.
So I take it that the contractor has no contingency, 'cause we have a project contingency down here?
Well, this is just our contingency in case.
So the contractor has a contingency also?
Well, there was a $200,000 unforeseen conditions in the bid, on the bid document. You could see that. And that's because of the groundwater down there. In case they, 'cause what we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna have to excavate 17 feet, overexcavate, pull it out, and then put the dirt back in and compact it all the way down. So we're hoping, as dry as it is, hopefully it won't hit any water. So that, we put $200,000 in there if we have to put GeoGrid at any point to help stabilize that foundation. So that, we put it in there. All the bidders had to put, add that $200,000 and you, it was on.
But, but the bidders didn't have, I mean, the construction stuff, I know that you, you've done. Most have a line for contingency under construction.
Well, I'm sure they do, yeah. But we don't, we don't, we won't see their, we won't even see their scheduled values until probably another month.
Okay.
But they, they, they will value every type of work, and that's how they bill us. But, yeah, they'll, they definitely have, all have some kind of contingency built into their bid. But that's their money, not ours.
So we were hoping, you know, on a good day of nice cold beer, that this would have come in at 28 million. But that was before, uh, that's what we were hoping all along. But, you know, economics changed and John and I were both sweating.
Well, and I haven't slept since the 27th, but.
You would, you would have slept at 27?
Since, since the bid opening, but.
Oh, yeah.
If Putin would not have invaded Ukraine, this number would be lots lower.
Now you sound like the White House.
No, I'm just kidding.
Gas went up because of Putin, right?
Yeah, exactly. No, I.
Preemptively.
And we're confident we have the funding to do it. It puts a damper in some of our other grandiose plans that we really, Building 30 needs a renovation. There's a couple other high priorities, but we do have some maintenance money. We'll have to just work within those parameters of those projects to get the work done.
I'll just say this, I'll, I'll say this on, on the record, and, and I, I'm a little concerned, John, by, by saying it, but I also understand why you said. I just wanna be sure that, that, um, this is the first building that I remember that we ever talked about COPs, if it didn't work out, and where other monies would come from. Um, I also understand the environment we're in. I'm ready to break around on a home in Prescott, Arizona. I'm up 30% already. I either go or I don't.
Yeah.
So, um, the developers we're dealing with right now up here, they're 30% over, like you said. It just makes me a little nervous as a trustee that if it doesn't work out, you know, we're, we're looking at something down the road this early on. That does concern me. Um, I believe in the project. My wife and I bought a bunch of bonds for the project, so I've always supported this. I, I think it's a great project, and I think it's something that will hopefully bring the valley together long, long-term and, and really kind of act as a, um, uh, just, just a great facility for people to use from throughout the valley, so.
Well, and I think that's, Dr. Walden and I have had a lot of discussion. This is a marquee project. This is the big VBC project. Everybody in the community wants it. We don't wanna go into a value engineering situation and make it half of what it should have been.
Yeah.
We're confident that we can, we got the funds to do it, you know, but if the earthquake hits tomorrow or whatever, well, today's numbers are okay. I just put those funding options down there just to let the board know that, you know, there are other ways to fund this thing.
The point here is that we could have just brought the bid and said, here's what the bid is, and this was the low bid. We want, we wanted you, as a board particularly, and the public, to understand the total cost of this project from the beginning to the end, so that in complete transparency, uh, it's, it's a 47, I mean, on a conservative side, the idea here is that this is, would be our worst day, the 47 million. We're hoping for much less than that. John's hoping for 45, and I'm hoping for 43. So whatever we hope for is one thing, but we feel like we were very, very conservative in coming up with these numbers. And, uh, this is the most that we should be looking at, uh, in worst case. But again, if they start throwing nuclear bombs, well, then that is what that is. But trying to just be completely.
Transparent. Let's just, this is, I mean, I'm not thrilled about.
The, the, the original number, if you go back four years ago, was 35 million. That was the original number. Now, these numbers change, construction change, development changes. I mean, the lowest, the lowest number on there is the thing that people gripe in our industry, is the fees. So the, the fees, you got out pretty, pretty low on the water and sewer, but, uh, they are what they are. Numbers are the numbers.
Ready to vote?
Student advisory?
Yes.
Is Bernard Construction here?
No, I don't think so.
No?
Get some sleep tonight, John.
I won't sleep for.
530 days.
Did you, can you go back to board docs?
Is that what the schedule is?
Yeah.
There you go.
Now the real time begins, right?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
5:30 for what, the ninth or?
Well, I'm sure, where is it? No, you see, it'll be a couple of weeks. It should be done end of January, 24.
So are you, do you count calendar days or business days?
Calendar.
Okay, so 5:30.
Okay, 12.3 agreement with San Bernardino. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm up. Okay, I missed it.
You wanna display it for Dr. Walden? There you go.
Oh, okay. That's what I was after.
Uh, agreement, San Bernardino County Department of Public Works, Special District CA 64. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I'm gonna give that one to Henderson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second to Pinkerton. Any?
I think this, this is the, you see it on the sheet here.
It's the hookup fees for the stadium.
It's 130 there, but it's 127.9.
Okay, and student advisory vote?
Yes.
You're gonna go back to the board docs?
Yeah.
While we're voting, did anything ever happen with the sweeping contract with CSA?
Yeah, we're back.
So it's, it's their call to get back?
What was this?
The, we met with him on the street sweeping.
Oh, yeah.
All right, moving.
Billy Club that we could hit somebody over the head with, 'cause we gave them a go ahead. We gave them a go ahead, and they.
Michelle says we should use it more. Uh, 12.4 estimated cost for best net services. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Brady, second by Henderson. Anybody know, not know what best net services are?
I know you know.
I know I know.
You tell them.
I'm good, if you guys are all good. Did you read your agendas?
This is what we pay the county.
Software and hardware.
Keep books for us.
Our plan is.
Finance, HR.
Right checks.
E, payroll stubs, all of that. Uh, any discussion about this? No. Student advisory vote?
Yes.
The next two out of them were pulled.
Yes, so we're gonna move on to Human Resources Act, Action Agenda. 13.1 academic equivalency for work experience. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Who didn't? Oh, Mr. Brady.
We won't say a joke, for God.
Sorry, I, I did call you Mr. Brady out of respect. I'm sorry, I was just trying to move on. 7:30 Joe.
I know.
Ice cream.
Uh, 13.1.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
I'm gonna give that to Pinkerton if you don't mind.
Mr. Wood, time to get his motion.
There you go.
Ice cream.
Any, um, thing anybody wants to say? Student advisory?
Yes.
Beautiful. Moving on to 13.2, non-classified short-term employees. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Henderson.
Second.
Second by Brady. Any comments? Student advisory?
Yes.
13.3 agreement with Erickson Law Firm APC. We probably should know why. Motion by Wood, second by Brady.
Well, they are our chief negotiators.
Right.
And all three contracts have been negotiated right now.
Any other comments? Student advisory?
Yes.
All right, moving on to 14.1, License Agreement, 42 Lines Inc.
Motion.
Motion by Brady, second, oh, sorry, motion by Wood, second by Brady. Woo-hoo. Freaky Friday over here. Um, any comments? Student advisory vote?
Yes.
Thank you for appreciating my humor. Did I miss it? No.
I was reading.
I know, I saw. You're okay.
Thank you.
I'll allow it.
You're okay. Way to go.
14.2 curriculum changes. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Brady, second by Henderson. Any comments? This is usually the most student, um, spoken about by the student, if you have any comments about the curriculum changes.
Would that fall under how you guys changed the physics in certain classes? I feel like that was a really good thing.
It was a good thing, yeah.
You know how to, you know how to hit the link, though, to see what's behind?
Yeah, like she met today, so.
All right.
She's got it.
Well, she, somebody had already schooled her, because she.
I wonder who.
Came loaded up.
I wonder who that could be. She's just very smart. It's okay. She did it all on her own. Uh, can I get your student advisory? She did it all on her own. Can I get your student advisory vote then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sixteen-point-one, Service Agreement Contract Education, Cal State San Bernardino University Enterprises Corporation, Cal State Reentry Initiative, C S R I.
Second.
One-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars income to the district.
And Pinkerton.
Contract Ed.
Sorry. Student advisory?
Yes.
I like it. Are we waiting on anybody? Just a little cucko and I'll take care of it.
Can't click the right, but you gotta click the left one.
Got to click something. Okay, we are on twenty-point-one, Simba Center. Did I say it right?
You did.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Ooh, I'm going to give it to Pinkerton because she's lovely, and we'll give the second to Henderson.
So this is.
You're lovely too, buddy.
This is a open PO working with this company to, or this entity to help us provide supportive housing services for district students experiencing homelessness and those at risk of becoming homeless. We get a grant for this, the H I P Grant, Housing Grant.
Awesome.
Is this the same group from last year or two years?
No, we fired them. They're terrible.
Ooh, on the record, they're terrible.
I'm glad you said that.
Student advisory vote?
Yes.
Not that I had an opinion.
Not in the slightest. Twenty-point-two, High Desert Community Foundation MOU.
Motion.
Motion by Brady, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Any comments?
So it's another of the same type. Doing the same thing, housing.
Okay, and student advisory vote?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of giving one group seven-hundred thousand like we did, or we didn't actually give them seven-hundred, but like made that available as a potential, we're splitting it up.
Okay, so moving on to the information and discussion portion of our agenda, we're going to go to our first reads of our board policies. Did everybody read them?
Yep.
Do you know any changes that you've had?
They're clean.
They're good. We're not going to vote on them until next month, so any discussion on it, we're good.
I'd like to thank staff for preparing them. They did a very good job.
Michelle.
Michelle.
You are a rock star.
I was looking for the, for the policy about the use of the corporate jet, but that wasn't in there.
I am not getting in that death trap, just saying. Thank you. Moving on to twenty-one, I can't see, ten, Emeritus Status. So we're discussing it, yes? You're informing us, yes?
We're informing you.
Thank you.
That this particular person who was at one time a classified member.
Counselor. This is Kelly Beach.
Oh. I thought I was talking about the equivalence. Okay, so this is Kelly Beach Pinkerton. She retired, as you know, so. Great counselor.
Nice. Okay.
She was everywhere. She really made a big impression.
Hard worker.
Yeah. So do you need a motion or?
No, this was just information. So we're going to move on to twenty-two-point-one, Individual Board of Trustee Reports. We are at the end of our agenda. I want to make note of the time. It is seven-oh-one. So we'll start with you, Joe. Trustee Brady, apologies. Trustee Joe.
I think the student president should go first.
I think the student.
I think you should go first.
I'll go first. Tomorrow, we have a, we have what I think is the biggest meeting I've been a part of at VBC since I came here thirty-four years ago. We formed three economic development organizations with the help of VBC. But tomorrow, I have the opportunity of introducing Dr. John Deserai, leading expert of global movement, the movement of global services, and a leading authority on labor, and to a joint lunch with Dr. Walden and Dr. Eva Bag to talk about how do we prepare for the companies that are coming up here right now and planning. There's about thirty million feet of industrial space coming on the market. Quite candidly, we don't have the labor for it. I know the colleges doing everything they can to prepare for it, and I'm, I'm, I'm just honored that John has agreed to come up here and that the colleges agreed to host the lunch. Without Saturday's retreat up, up in Big Bear was, was, was great. I think we have a great group of students this year. There was a lot of good energy, a lot of good ideas, and I really enjoyed it. The thing I think I liked the most about this one this year was after the lunch, having six students come on over to the table. Brandon and I were sitting there, kind of just jabbing along, and, and these six students really want to sit down and talk turkey. You know, where am I going in my career? What is life really like? You know, they, they really want to have that, kind of that heart-to-heart. You, you could, you could feel it. And one of the students that was there, and Brandon, I think, knows what I'm talking about, you, you could tell was, was looking for something. They were, I'm, I'm not going to say they were, they were lost, but I'll tell you, I, I reflected for the hour and ten, ten minutes when I drove home.
Time's up.
About that, no, about that student. And, and, and what's funny about that, and Brandon knows this, there are millions, there are a million students like that across America today. And if we wonder why we have the problems that we are, and the depression, and everything else, I, I, you know, I, 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 I got home and Deb walked in the room, she goes, you look so sad. I said, no, I had a great day, but this student really made me reflect about the pressure. And this student's taking twenty-one units.
Wow.
Yeah.
Has anybody here ever, I took twenty-four in college, but three of mine make up because I flunked the first time on the first one. But, no, I mean, it was, it was a conversation, I don't think I will ever forget that hour of interaction more so than the other ten retreats I've gone to, because those, what those students had to say. So, Robert, you, you know, I, I just can't take my hat off to you enough, and the leadership that you bring, and, and, and welcome aboard. That's what this whole thing's about, graduation and that, that whole day. So I'm looking forward to tomorrow, and, and I, I, you've done a good job. You're about six minutes late than the first time I've been back, but. Good job.
Did you have anything you wanted to say, DM?
ASB had a successful retreat this year, and the students of ASB originally had three-hundred-and-sixty goals that we narrowed down to nine. And then we crammed it all into eight, and I look forward to working with you guys and the other foundations and organizations on campus to get those done.
Wonderful. We welcome you with open arms.
Thank you.
Dennis?
I just wanted to say I'm sorry I couldn't make the meeting this time. I was indisposed. I had a lot of, have a lot of problems this last month. Anyway, anyway, I'd like to wish everybody a great new year, a great summer, and looking forward to the next meeting. I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking that's coming on, on the board meeting tonight. Anyway, I don't have much else to say. Have a great summer.
Wonderful.
See you in, see you in August.
In August.
Stay cool.
Stay cool. Sharon?
Okay, well, we had a great time at graduation and.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, Jennifer was a rock star up front.
Oh, wow. A dork.
Fantastic. And went to ASB Retreat and really enjoyed that, got to know a lot of students and know how hard it is for them. Can really feel their pain sometimes, so, yeah. Totally understand that. I found out what color I was. I took the test. I'm a white with a little bit of red and a little bit of yellow, so if anybody wants to look that up, you can find out what you are.
That means she's a peacemaker and keeper.
Blessed are the people.
And I went to the CCLC webinar, and what I found out is that we're on track with the needs of our community, where I see others are really struggling to be relevant.
Yes.
So I'm really happy about that. And then the other thing is, is Fred Dearborn, I don't know if some of you know him, but he's retired counselor from Silverado, and he worked tirelessly on the dual enrollment. I meant, this guy worked through this summer with it. He took off. He basically didn't have a summer. And, but anyways, I want to tell you a little story. When we were there, we met, he wanted us to meet, she was an intern, was his last intern there. And so we went over there, she was there with her boyfriend, and then started talking to him, and the boyfriend said, hey, you were Pinkerton, you were my counselor. And he goes, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I know who you are. He goes, you know, I didn't want to go to VBC, but you told me I need to go to VBC. So he did, and the intern happened to be here at VBC, and they ended up together. So VBC is also a place to meet your wife or your husband.
Future spouse.
Exactly.
Very cute.
But anyways, I just wanted to say about Fred, he really has worked hard, and we are going to miss him dearly. He's been a great asset to VBC with getting our students here, so if you're watching, Fred, we love you.
Wow, he finally retired?
He finally retired.
All right, Brandon.
All right. Had a great time at graduation, as always. Graduation is such a fun day. I would, I would agree with Joe that it's the, the number one day to be a trustee is graduation. So much fun, getting to hand out, you know, all the diplomas and it's just great to see the, the year, great to see the fruits of everybody else's labor. The retreat was exceptional. Robert, you put on yet another fabulous retreat. I, I also had a great time at lunch, Joe, with the students who came over. It's weird how the group changes so much from year to year, right? The, the, the ASB group just always has its own personality. It's never the same twice.
That's true.
And the personality of, of your ASB, that you get the pleasure of leading, just seems that, that they are all really engaged. They're really outgoing and social, and they want to move around from table to table at, at the lunch and meet different people. They don't kind of.
Click, like get into.
Right, kind of sit with who they already know, and, and, you know, we've had years where Joe, because of the presentation that Joe and I do, we're always there for the lunch, and then just Joe and I are just sitting at a table having lunch. You know, just us, or just Joe and I, and Robert, or Tim, or whoever, and the students just, they're all doing their own thing. And this year, they were all very interactive, and they all wanted to have a lot of interaction and conversation. And I, I, I hope, I hope your council feels the same way that Joe and I, and I'm sure Jen's going to say, but I don't want to ruin the surprise. I hope they feel the same way that we feel, that it was just a lot of fun, and you've got a great group, and they're fun to interact with, and, you know, super fun, this, this ASB retreat. Tiring, I don't know, I'm still tired, but, you know, it's worth it. Even though, not only fun, I guess I should give you credit also, not just for the fun, but in years past, we've been in the room. For anybody who's been to the retreat, you know what the room is, and that's the room where Mr. Nice Guy over here, I can't, the HR people probably have to leave the state when, when that happens, when Robert's in there and says, nobody's leaving until this is done. And we've been in there until three-thirty in the morning, going at the goals, the ASB goals. I, I always stay, since Jen's been on the board, she stays, and we stay in the room, and my wife stays to help in any way we can, try not to overstep, try not to step on your toes, but just to be there to help with wordsmithing or kind of insight or whatever, or dispute resolution sometimes, depending on how it's going. And we've been there until three-thirty in the morning. Just painful. And then, of course, Robert, for anybody who doesn't know, Robert, everybody probably thinks he's like a really nice guy. He's not. Basically.
Ouch.
His, his rule is, he's going to laugh and nod his head because he damn well knows this is true. His rule is, the longer that you stay in the room, the earlier he's going to set the meeting the next morning. So three-thirty in the morning, we're in there, and he's like, okay, everyone be here in your seats, ready to go at seven AM. Breakfast will be served at six. And you're like, oh my God, Robert. Now, this year, we finished by eleven-thirty, and Robert says, all right, you guys did great work. Everybody, how about if we're here, we'll start at ten AM, everybody be in your seats, you know, like nine-forty-five, and we'll have breakfast out maybe by.
You get cereal.
By nine. And I'm going, what? Like, so when we get done early, we get to start late. Yeah, so for anybody who's thinking, oh, Robert, he's such a nice guy, yeah, just remember that. You finish at three-thirty in the morning, then muster time the next morning is seven AM.
Brandon, do you ever wonder why somebody from the prior year's group doesn't tell somebody from the next year's group?
There's returns. There's returns. There's lots of returning students.
There are returns, and it's weird that even though there's returns, the group takes on a whole new personality. Wouldn't you agree that this year's council has a totally different personality and dynamic?
Completely opposite of last year.
Right. And it's, they just work together really well. They, they complement each other. There was, I never heard, maybe I missed it, but I was up there from Friday at about dinnertime. I got stuck in court. I wanted to be there early. My apologies.
How dare you.
From Friday about dinnertime until we all left on Sunday, I didn't hear one, like, bit of bickering or disagreement, or, or even a rub between any two people on the council. And there were people who had differing, differing opinions, but they were very mature and very professional about it. And it, it's just, you got a great, you're lucky. You better hope it stays that way, right? Hope it stays that way, because you've got a fantastic group this year. So it, it was, as always, my pleasure. I'm so happy that Robert keeps inviting us up. It is probably the very close second place to the best day to be a trustee is when we're, we're up there and doing that.
Oh, yeah.
And just absolutely love it. Aside from, from working with the students, we had some.
Seven-thirty, Brandon.
We're good. We had some great team building and, and I don't know, well, HR's here. I don't know what the proper words are, but art, art, you got a word? Team building, camaraderie? Team building, right? We had some great team building, exercises and engagements, had a fabulous time on both Friday and Saturday evening. Just a, a great weekend. I'm still tired from it, trying to recover, but God, I must be getting old or something. But I look forward to next year's if I'm invited back, and I hope I am.
All right.
It's almost seven-thirty, Jen, hurry up.
It really is. It really is.
The advantage of getting done, Robert doesn't turn into a werewolf until midnight. So I noticed that he was so nice with his students this year because they got done at eleven-thirty.
Yeah, it's a plus. You should spread the word.
You have to come in at ten.
So.
Inside information, you know, that, it just, yeah.
I second what everybody has said. It's a phenomenal time to be a trustee. I think the thing about graduation and the ASB, the gala, the scholarship drives, the kinds of things that we get to attend, those, that's really what makes it tangible for us, right? Because we're just like really in the ether and up above it, and we're not, we don't get to do the fun work that you guys get to do, so I thank you for including us. I do want to say on the record that Dan Walden and Todd, Todd Scott were both there until the end for the goals as well, and probably would have been until three-thirty if it had gone that long. I, I do think so, so. for the goals as well, and probably would have been until three-thirty if it had gone that long. I, I do think so, so. Kudos. There was the management retreat there as well, which was amazing to spend time with you guys and get to know you a little better. And with that, let's close and, or get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seventeen. We'll get a motion from Brady. A second from Henderson, and adjourned.
Is it a new record?
No, she had a seven o'clock.
Who said no from way back in the back?
I'll give you one guess.